We're waiting.
Oh, you're fine. You've got one minute to go here.
All right, we ready? And I'll call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:10 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to announce that we are, for the viewing public, we are having issues broadcasting tonight's meeting through Channel 20. Comcast is here and they're working to resolve it, so hopefully they'll get that fixed soon. Otherwise, the live streaming is available through our website. So, I'd like to also thank Rod Waddell, a Jefferson High School graduate, is here to volunteer his time to help us with the AV equipment and the broadcast as well. So Rod, thank you again for being here. The coordinator call to roll.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Ms. Scavano.
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Here.
Mr. Segal.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Ms. Escobedo.
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Looks, does not look like we have any recognitions tonight, Earl. Okay, all right. So we will move then to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of our citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we're following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to our Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with our guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names, the one whose turn it is to speak, and then the second person who's next, and that person would come up to the front. That will allow us to have the maximum on of time for our comments. There is a digital clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. We thank you, as always, for your interest and for your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Ricky Naylor, to be followed by Elsie Wilson.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, you know, you guys tired me coming down here, but it's probably my last time coming down here, so, I mean, you know, I know it makes you guys uncomfortable when we come down here, but see, that's the problem with this, with this school right now. These guys have been getting so comfortable, and that's why the school district is failing. I know, you know, it should be like you guys look at us like, well, it's a concern. Well, you should be, you should be, you should be respecting the fact that we come down here. I mean, look, I don't have any kids in this school, this, but yet I'm coming down here, trying to help fight for these kids, and then at the same time, you know, we getting disrespected, you know, by the HR department. I mean, if these guys keep thinking that, you know, it's not good to tell us that, well, we got all these qualified staff around here, but then you produce, the product comes out with all these kids failing. I mean, now, we should have been, we, we talked to you guys, we could, we should be sitting down, strategy, put some strategy together and trying to figure this problem out, but you guys said, well, you know, we, we got it figured out, you know, and I look at night, when, when your, when your guy talk, I hear what the strategy is, and that strategy is not going to work, like I told you five years ago. I mean, you guys create a position to have one white teacher train other white teacher. I mean, what is that going to do? And then you keep saying, trying to hire minority teachers, it's still staying at about, what, four, 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 four and a half percent? You guys need about 500 teachers of minority background to even get in this game. So, and so you're not going to get that in the game, so we need to figure something else out, but you guys won't sit down though, and say, okay, come on, guys, all you guys that got experience in turning these schools around, come on in, and let's get down to business. But what you do though, is you go out, you create these jobs, and you make sure that people like myself, even though we got a lot of experience though, that you can say, well, you don't qualify because you don't have that. I mean, I've been around talking to a lot of superintendents. I mean, these, I had one and told her the same thing, and she called right down HR, so you know what? I'm, I want to hire some people, and I don't want you putting out of stuff on there no more. And she hired them, and they doing just fine now, but this, this here, it's not doing.
Thank you, sir. Elsie Wilson, to be followed by Nancy Godowski.
Thank you and good evening. One of the core values of District 205 is that you are the stewards of taxpayers' money. Rockford School District is getting over 58% of all real estate taxes collected from the city of Rockford. Not only has District 205 been lacking in education of our children, let us not forget the walk-in school bus, as it is known throughout the district. It is a disgrace to have our young children walking nearly one-half of a mile to get to a school in the winter when the temperature goes south of freezing. This practice is on the west side of Rockford and affect predominantly minority children. This area of the school district is perhaps the only area in the school district that is doing this. We are all living in the 21st century, and I know we can do a better job than what we are doing. I think this needs to be rethought. It might be okay if this, if this was, was being done throughout the district, but it is not. Remember, change is inedible. Do things that are right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Nancy Godowski, to be followed by Reverend Shelby.
A few board meetings ago, a few months ago, actually, some questions were raised that concerned me at a meeting. Why are some educational programs not going through the Education Committee? Staff answer was, there was no need. The other concern is why are certain agreements and contracts not being examined by Board Legal Counsel prior to approval or vote? The non-attorney department head said there was no need. It appears this administration is bypassing their own legal counsel and school board. They are only feeding you the information they want you to hear so the Board can rubber-stamp them. This is a slippery slope. You as a Board don't want to go. I am hoping you will hold administration more accountable, like they hold the building employees in our schools accountable. There is a great, great lack of communications between administration and the Board and administration and the employees throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Derek Shelby.
St. John's Chapter 13, verse 26 and 27. Jesus answered, "He it is so whom I shall give a sop when I have dipped it." And when he had dipped the sop, he gave it to Judas Iscariot, the son of Simon. And after the sop, Satan entered into him, then said Jesus unto him, "That thou doest do quickly." Now, listen to this. They done resegregated the schools. This is the work of Satan. And he used white men. Now, he used black men too. The devil don't care about, he don't give a damn about the race. It's the person. They raping our kids in this school district.
I'd ask you to follow our guidelines.
What's your guidelines? Give me my, it's one, one minute 11 seconds, I want my time back. The Rockford School District is raping our kids. Segregation is evil. In 1954, Board of Education on, Boarden Brown, they, they said then that segregation was evil. The only reason they segregating the schools in Rockford, Illinois, is so they can rape black males. That's the only reason they doing it. It ain't got nothing to do with the business sector or nothing to do with the economy, because anywhere else in America, they're talking about that does well for the economy when they got diversity. We don't want zones. The only reason the school district has got zones is because Satan is behind it, because they raping black kids. They been doing it for 50 years, and we supposed to be happy about it? We supposed to be happy about it in this wicked school board? Thank the Lord Jesus for his blood.
Okay, thank you. I would ask if there is any Board member comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on then to our consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items. The meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2017. Payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request log, and travel. The bid recommendation for the demolition of 14 parcels for the new Kishawaki area school, Phase 3. Recurring contracts for two certified special education teachers, Maxim Healthcare, the fiscal year 18 Northwestern Illinois Association contract, the certified speech and language pathologist through Vocovision for Sarah Wu and Barbara Rosano, and supplemental tutoring with Elevate K-12. And the other consent items, including the memorandum of understanding for the peer assistance review evaluation process, the memorandum of understanding for compensation changes to the RBMA agreement, the workers' compensation settlement agreements for CB, GT, and LD, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration?
6D.
Mr. Segal wants 6D pulled. Okay. Mr. Connor?
7B.
7B, okay. Any others? Now, the coordinator then call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Ms. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the approval of Item 6D, which is the purchase orders.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion or question? Okay. The coordinator call the roll on the approval of the purchase orders.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Ms. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Abstain.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one abstain.
I'll now take a motion for Item 7B, which is the demolition of 14 parcels of, for the new Kishawaki area school, Phase 3.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor.
One quick comment. I ran into the principal from Kishawaki School at an event, and she got a comment from, I believe it was a parent, and if you haven't been down to Kishawaki to see all the work that's been done, I highly recommend it, because the statement she got from this parent was, "This is really happening."
Yes.
And, and I think she was moved by it, the staff was moved by it, so I just wanted to point out that in spite of some delays that I think were foisted on us, commend the individuals responsible for making this move forward, because it's a really tangible outcome that I think both the parents, staff, teachers at Kishawaki, as well as the community can see as a real commitment to our investment in that neighborhood. So, I appreciated the, the feedback from the principal, and I really wanted to share that with everyone else.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Item 7B.
Mr. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are, we are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following items. The appointment of Tammy Shipert as a 12-month high school assistant principal, I think that's at Roosevelt. Appointment of Basia Bakhtor as the 12-month bilingual administrator, and the appointment of Amy Shipinski as the 12-month director of INI, and the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the Board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities with the prior written, without, with the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4100 is expelled for the entire 2017-18 school year, and the following students are receiving EIA's 3313, 3314, 3315, 3316, 3317, 3318. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Ms. Scavano.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are onto our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you, Mr. Scavano. One point I would like to start with is to thank the Board and the community. We had wonderful attendance at the annual State of the District address. One highlight I'd like to pull from that, I think it's very timely, is our continued commitment to an investment in teacher recruitment programs. One of the challenges we face in Rockford, Illinois, and in every state in the country, and certainly throughout the state of Illinois, is that we have a teaching population that does not reflect the population. does not reflect the population of students in our school system. In the state of Illinois, about 75% of teacher graduates that come from Illinois colleges are Caucasian females. And one of the things that we're working hard to do with our partnership with Rockford University and our school district is we have an opportunity for 20 Rockford Public School graduates each year to be, to attend Rockford University at a substantially discounted tuition. In fact, it's $100,000 scholarship, all told, for undergraduate. Upon graduation, we're looking to hire as many as 20 of our Rockford Public School students who participate in this program, and then we are offering a full master's degree. And I say this because of all the things that we've talked about, it appears that the conversation continues to circle around what kind of strategies are we doing as a district to try to make sure our teaching population reflects the quality and the diversity that we are looking for. And I believe that quality exists within our student population. So I would again like to encourage our community, first of all, if you get a chance on our website to see the video of Jasmine, who is one of 11 students that took part of the first year of the program. Jasmine is attending Rockford University right now, was inspired by her high school art teacher to become a teacher, and it's going to be really exciting to see Jasmine and the other 11 students. The other side of that story is we had nine $150,000 scholarships that went unused this year. And my challenge to the community is, if you know students in this year's senior class, I would like to make sure that we have 20 scholarships filled, that if at all possible, reflect the quality and the diversity of our student population. Our chief of human resources, Mr. Zetaker, is personally going out and speaking to all of our senior year teaching seminar courses. There are about 170 high school students who are enrolled in those. We aren't just hoping students come, we're building an apparatus for middle school and even early elementary all the way up. We knew this would be a process, but I want the community to know that we are making a huge investment in our students and in our teaching workforce quality. Current RPS teachers are also benefiting from this program right now. While we wait for students to go through the program, it's a four-year program, we are going to have over 80 current RPS teachers get a master's degree in urban education due to that partnership. So our current teachers are improving, but we really hope to build a long-term solution to some of the problems that consistently get addressed. So one of the things I continue to ask our community members to consider is let people know, get the word out that there are wonderful opportunities to, to become a teacher in the Rockford Public Schools. I think we have a unique value proposition there, and we want our students to consider coming back home and, and serving their fellow classmates of the future. Also wanted to make another point. We did have some real challenges as we started the school year, and I think we got Channel 20 functioning again. So if there are any folks out there, we're going to be communicating directly with our principals and all of our staff members. We know that there were a lot of challenges at the start of the school year and continue to be a lot of challenges with the implementation of our current custodial contract with Aramark. We shifted providers, and there are down about 40 staff members at this point, and we also have some, some of the management staff that has not been hired. And our team is working diligently to try to address that. We made a transition very, very late in the process, and we have, we know as a district we have a lot of work to do to improve in the quality of what we're doing to support the start of the school year. That's one of multiple factors that could have been better this year. So we appreciate the continued support and understanding of our faculty, but we are aware of the problem, and we are fully committed to making sure that problem is addressed. You will, you will consistently hear feedback from our schools team and our operations team as we give you updates about how we're making progress towards getting rapidly to full staffing levels and ultimately getting to the quality that you deserve. We are disappointed that we have not been able to do a better job of that, and our management team is working hard to make sure that the performance of the vendor continues to improve. And I will be keeping you updated on a regular basis from this platform on how we're doing on that. With that, I will turn it back to Mr. Scavano on the board. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, we're now on to the committee reports. Ms. McCulloch, you're up first with the Education Committee report.
Education Committee has not met since our last board meeting, but we do meet in this room next week, September 19th at 5:30 PM. The agenda will be posted on Board Docs under Education Committee.
Okay. Mr. Rollins, the Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee has not met because we were scheduled to meet on Labor Day. We will instead meet tomorrow in this room at 5:30 PM.
Okay. And Mr. Connor, the Operations Committee report.
We actually did meet.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Monday?
On the 5th, yeah, on the Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday the 5th at 6:30. Our agenda included 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items that are on the agenda tonight, so I won't go through them, but they were reviewed. That was basically comm ed, there are three architect bids, and then an intergovernmental agreement for Walker. All that was discussed. There were four items over and above that. The first, and I give a lot of credit to the Nutrition Services Executive Director, Renee Slotin-Bochamp, boy, I hope I got the name correct, but the committee felt that the information given was quite good and the direction of Nutrition Services is quite good. I really recommend, if you have not seen her presentation, it was quite good. The one thing, and I know for a lot of us, this is not a word you'd think of with nutrition very often, but it was very innovative. And all the committee members gave positive feedback. And let me just say a few things that, some of the things they're looking at is, an example of the innovation is to have a, an app on a phone to preorder lunch and then have, it was for high school, I think they were doing a pilot. So I thought that was very clever, and they had shown that that works. So I think the point is that the direction is they're looking at a lot more systemic ways of having fresh vegetables, you know, healthy foods for the kids that are easy and accessible. That's another example where they're really trying to focus local foods. A lot of people have been involved in, in the local food movement. So the point is that they really, and something called farm to school. So my point is only that I think Nutrition Services is really trying to do a much better job of reaching out to the students, providing good, healthy food, and making it a lot easier to work with. So that was very well received. The transportation update from Mr. Sleef, Michael Sleef, I hope I got the name right again, I apologize. I'm not, I'm probably not doing justice to the names. One of the good numbers, and I'm sure Mr. Rollins will appreciate this, that the average age of the fleet has now gone down from 2011 to 6.25. So I think we're really making a lot of progress as the way it looks. We spent a lot of time talking about the, about the fleet, so there was a lot of good information there. So now that I had my happy things, my unhappy thing, right up front is what the superintendent talked about, and that's the custodial contract update. There are indeed a lot of open positions, and some people on the committee did question what the approach was to that. Without going into details, let me just say that the per hour wage was, we thought, an issue. And if you all remember, in the prior contract, one of the issues was, as an example, second shift had over 100% turnover. And one of the things that we said was, we found it unacceptable before, we'll find that unacceptable again. So we issued a challenge to the administration, and there's probably two main parts to this. Number one, I do give the administration credit, they have been talking directly to Aramark, and I believe, if I remember correctly from Mr. Schmidt, that they recently talked to a VP with Aramark to air our concerns. And that's, I think, this week even that they met, or perhaps last week. The point is that we are escalating this early, and so the two outcomes that I've asked to be done, number one, is to make sure that we address the issues in a formal written way, and that that comes back to the Operations Committee so that we know both the acknowledged issues and what our plan is. That was one. And that, number two, that we make sure that the feedback, and I know this is already in place, where they're reaching out not just to the principals, but to teachers and staff at the schools for their feedback. Knowing that that's in place, what I've asked is that we have, as we had agreed before, to have regular metrics presented to Ops so that as the time goes on, we can see what's happened and can track the results over time. So the two outcomes again is, number one, a plan with Aramark on how they're going to address the many issues, and there are many, I'm not going to talk through them, but we'll have a plan, and number two, that we'll get the feedback from everybody out in the buildings. So I think with those having visibility with the Operations Committee, the issues that we've encountered so far, we hope to address in a systemic way. The last thing is we did have a facilities master plan update, and I think one of the items, again, we're back to, I think, very much positive news here, that roughly 72%, I think it's $181 million as of the last report, has already been committed, finished, and paid out. I think that's quite an accomplishment where we are in our plan, so I think that news is good. I believe the number for committed, and I can't remember what the timeframe is, I think over the next year is another 49 million, so that will include the new school as well as some of the unfinished work on the additions. We still have a positive number for both contingencies, and I think roughly right now, I think we're roughly 2% under budget, which is good math, and the anticipation is we might end up 1% under because there are some pressures on some of the costs. However, we're ahead of schedule and we're still under budget, so I think that's a positive news. And as I gave the anecdote before, we're getting positive feedback on the actual progress that we're making, both in the new school out in Cherry Valley, but particularly that there's real tangible evidence to the neighborhood in Kishawaki. So commendations to everybody on that. Our next meeting, I'm sorry, I don't have the day in front of me, is the first Tuesday in October at 6:30 in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins?
One quick question about transportation, and I didn't want to ask some questions about the custodial services. On the transportation, are we making any progress in reducing the number of routes and the number of buses? I know we've been working on that.
Yes. We have 202 is the actual number, and I, I don't have the chart memorized, but it, but it is down if I remember correctly. Mr. Schmidt? No, it's not down, it's, well, it's down over time for obvious reasons, but I don't know if 202 is still the right number.
Right now, we have 202 routes. Last year, we had 196. That is down from 241 back in fiscal year 11. We've had a little uptick in some of the routes here. We changed the zones with the high schools and then with the bilingual program that we have kind of housed at two different buildings right now, and then basically where the students live. So we are up six right now.
Okay, thanks. And on the custodial, what I had heard was that we don't have a contract with Aramark yet. Is that true? And if that's true, then why?
That is correct.
Why is?
We were working on there, we just had a meeting with the Regional Vice President yesterday. We also have a conference call tomorrow with our outside legal counsel, Mr. Bischel, that's working on the contract, with their legal counsel out of Philadelphia to hash out. We're down to only a couple of different items in there to get the contract ready for sign. So we should have that hashed, we hashed out tomorrow hopefully at 3 o'clock when we go back and forth on some of the issues.
And then my recollection is, when we were talking about awarding the contract, that the IFB included performance incentives or disincentives. Is that still true?
Yes, we had that in there. There's a bid bond, performance bond, and then we also have some chargebacks in there if they don't have the staff in there, if they don't have managers in there. They've asked to waive that for initially up until December. We cut it back down for 90 days. That's part of the implementation of the plan, and that's some of the issues that we're going to work through on there. But we do have that in there. Once everything's operating at full capacity out there, if they're missing a manager, we charge them, I think it's like $2,000 a week. They only, we're only going to pay for what hours were worked with the custodial. They submit their rosters, and they're kind of like a certified payroll to make sure that we're not paying them for work that's not being done. So we do have those in there, in that invitation for bid.
Do they have all of their equipment in place?
Not all the equipment. They were missing some floor scrubbers out there that they assured me yesterday that they will get those floor scrubbers out there. Most of the other equipment is at the schools, but it's not unboxed, and they haven't trained the individuals how to use them, like a backpack vacuum cleaner. Just got to train the individuals. Instead of the standard upright vacuum cleaner, there's backpacks. They're using equipment that's lighter and more efficient, they just need to train everybody on there, and part of that is getting their managers in place to do the training.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for either, Mr. Connor? Jute?
So does that 90 days start from the day that we voted them here, or?
Yep. And that's where we put it in there.
It's not like the first day of school, because that was before that.
Right.
It was in July, wasn't it?
We have that nannied, and that's the one thing we're going to talk about tomorrow because that's one of the sticking points, is they wanted a little bit longer to get fully up the staff and get everything in place on the contract. So they initially came in and they wanted through December, basically they wanted six months. We said, "No, we'll give you nine months," and those were the issues that we're going to hammer out tomorrow and say, "No." If it's going to be 90 days, 91 days of where we need to move forward when we sign this contract.
Mr. Connor, Jute?
One quick thing, I did look it up, and the date for the next Ops Committee is October the 3rd, which is a Tuesday at 6:30.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We're now on to our action items. The first action item is the Center IRC for Teaching and Learning Contract. This was presented by Mrs. Nelson from Early Childhood. Is there a motion and a second to approve this agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 15A.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next action item is the real estate purchase of property at 524 Union Street. Mr. Schmidt presented this. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Siegel? Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the purchase of 524 Union Street.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to new business, and administration is asking to suspend the rules in order for the workplace agreement, company to begin recruiting for current vacancies with the district. So I probably need a motion and a second first to suspend the rules. Mr. Connor? Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion on that? None, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the agreement to suspend the rules.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Did I do something wrong there?
It's the motion, not an agreement, but it might be an agreement.
Okay, the motion. Okay.
Did I say? We can have discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light. Go ahead. All right. Mrs. McCulloch?
Like the backup light, beep 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 beep. Okay. So we did have a little bit more of a conversation today about why, what the timeliness of this is, and I just want to make sure all board members and everybody understands a little bit about why. I mean, what position or, what's the rush?
Yep. Currently, we have an open position in the HR Department for Director that's been posted and advertised for quite some time. We've interviewed several candidates, missed on some, and haven't found a quality one, and so that is a key position that we really want filled.
and so that is a key position that we really want filled, and we feel the work of an outside agency will help us attract better talent. The reason that the contract is $16,000 is there are other vacancies that are currently open that we are going to be advertising for, and some that could become available, and so we just are asking for the board's permission if we need to go outside. We typically don't use outside recruiting unless it's at a certain level, and so we look typically at a director level and above to utilize outsourced recruiting agencies.
So the point is that the rush is because of the HR, the open HR director position?
Correct.
Okay. Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve the workplace contract recruiting agreement for vacancies.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion on that? Mrs. McCulloch.
So one of my concerns with this contract is that it's very vague. It's open, it doesn't say what level. We also had this conversation that at least the contract could say director level or above. I mean, right now, we could be recruiting paras and we could be recruiting people for Airmark or what, I don't know. So I think it's good to have parameters, and I'd certainly like to see that in this contract, if that's what we're going, if that's what it's about, that's what it should say. So I don't know if I need to make a motion to ask for that to be part of the contract, Ms. Holdley, would I have to do that?
An amendment?
At least then the rest of the board can have a conversation.
Since it is up for approval now, it would have to be a motion to amend that contract because this is the first and last...
And only, right?
Yes. So it would have to be a motion to amend it to identify the level of position, I think is what you had asked about.
That's exactly what I'm asking. Yeah, and the board can choose to support me on that or not. So can I make that motion to amend the contract to stipulate the level of position to which this will be applied?
An amendment motion on, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any discussion on that? Okay, now we'll take a role on the amendment.
Can I write it first, please? Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
So you'll sign it at a later date after it's been amended? Yeah, now you have to do the motion.
Yeah, now I need, now I need the motion to approve the contract.
Yeah, the contract now. So we have the original motion. So now he's...
Right, the original motion. Mr. Connor has made a motion.
Got it. And Mr. Siegel seconded.
Mr. Siegel seconded. Now we'll take a vote. I call the role on the motion.
They still have another...
Sure, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So this is a sole source contract?
Yes.
Is there any reason why there were timeliness?
Well, it's under $25,000, and the other piece is that it possibly could fall under the exemption of providing a unique service, possibly, but it is under $25,000.
Any other comments?
And Mr. Escobedo, I've utilized others in the past in giving the requirements for those for smaller searches that fell under $10,000 and wasn't happy with their performance. And so the urgency with filling the specific position and possible others, the workplace has proven to give us quality candidates in the past, and so with the timing of this, that was also playing into my decision as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. McCulloch?
Ms. Holdley, would you clarify the under 25 piece so that everybody's on the same page?
Sure. Under the school code, the bidding requirements, you must bid out contracts unless it falls under one of the exemptions such as software or other things like that. You must bid it out, and so this falls under, if it's over a certain sum, which is $25,000.
Any other questions or comments? Now I'll have the coordinator then call...
Thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. Dixon, we'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the original, the motion to approve the contract.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously as amended.
Okay, Mrs. Lawrence, you're next. Certified speech and language pathologist.
This is for a contract for an independent contractor for speech-language services for our students?
This is for one day a week, if I remember right?
It's one day per week, correct.
She asked what building it'll be at?
I don't know exactly. We still have three more openings, so we would try to fill them, fill this position based upon what day of the week they could attend.
I see, okay. Mrs. McCulloch?
Let me be more specific. Do we have all our private schools covered, speech and language?
Yes.
And we have three openings within the district buildings?
We have three openings, correct.
And they're within the district building?
Correct. Well, they could be within all of them. So we're having charter schools as well as we're having an issue with.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Lawrence? None, this will be presented at our board meeting on the 26th for approval. Mrs. Alt, you're up next with Edmentum Exact Path.
We're going to have Mrs. Powell that's going to present to you just very briefly about this contract that's a supplemental software component that aligns to MAP for the gifted program. She'll explain a little bit more. The reason we're bringing it to the board is, of course, that it contributes to the larger Edmentum contract that the district has already.
Can you explain, remind us what the Edmentum, original Edmentum is about?
Currently, the board has a contract with Edmentum for the high school software. It's called CourseWare for district high schools, and it's upwards of $85,000. So this is something that we can't just hack on and have it work. So Edmentum basically is a program that works similarly to the contract the district currently has with Edgenuity, which is the compass learning program that most of the other elementary, middle schools are using to help supplement learning. In our particular program, just because of the current nature of what our students have been doing with testing, we've for a long time synced our MAP data to a program called Study Island. And this Exact Path program works with Study Island and with NWEA MAP to provide students with personalized content that then they use to help meet and exceed their growth expectations through MAP.
Questions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mrs. McCulloch?
So it indicates on here that it will be launched with the Day of Professional Development for teachers. What is the plan for that professional development? Because do you have a day for teachers to do it?
Sure. So the PD will happen on SIP Day, which is the October 2nd, I think I want to say? Yeah, Monday, October 2nd. Both teachers from Marshall Elementary and then Marshall Middle will be together to learn how to establish classes within the program, how to read the results of the sync that happens through the MAP data, and then how to create lessons and small groups for instruction.
But you won't be doing the individual plans until after the winter MAP? So that's a second MAP that's given?
Actually, once we, if this contract is approved, we can go ahead and sync it starting after the next board meeting because the MAP window will have closed. So all students, by the time we do our professional development, will have the results in there for the process, and then that can start right away with students.
And the $4,000 is just to use it this year?
The $4,000 would be for this year, and it's split between the two buildings, and we're looking at paying for that out of our Fund 10.
Okay. And so then you'll reevaluate to decide if you're going to come back again and ask for it next year?
Yeah, basically...
And what metric will you use for that?
So what we do is we measure the percentage of students that meet or exceed growth through the MAP testing. So between that information at winter and then again at spring, comparing that with the usage of students within this program, we can get a better read on whether or not we feel like this was a good way of personalizing that instruction and reaching those students.
Mr. Connor?
So given circumstances, I guess I get to ask the tech nerd questions.
Sure.
A role, I'm happy to do. One of the statements here is, I mean, this is software-based, and it says they allow the students to access essentially anywhere, anytime across the Internet. So it makes it sound that the tracking is done on a hosted site?
Yes.
Through that, okay. So the hosting is done so both during the day and at any time, it's always on that same hosted site, and I'd have to assume we went through all the security protocol calls, all those kinds of things. That's been verified, and that's all up to our standards. Then on terms of the actual results, do we have to do the reporting on their site? Do we also get data back? Is there any standard on that?
Reports are generated within the system, and then those are available to teachers and administrators. The one thing that we like about this system that is a little different from the Edgenuity component is it's actually usable on all platforms, so you can use it on an iPad or a handheld device or laptop or Chromebook, any of them.
From their hosting site, it's got, so it's HTML5. All right, the only other thing then, you know, back to my standard is that, you know, when we have our decision support system, obviously, if we can export data at some point, I'm sure that would be something that we'd want to do. So that'd be the only thing, and I don't remember the details of Edmentum if they have that, but that would be something, so that we have standard platforms where we can have our data together through, for choice, for decision at, so that'd be the only thing I'd ask. I'm not saying you have to do it right now, let me be clear. I'm just saying that's a consideration, I think, that you'd want over time. Tracking numbers is always easier when you own it.
Sure.
And the availability, et cetera. Anyway, suggestion on that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. This will come for us to vote on at our next board meeting on the 26th. Mr. Zetiker is up for Giovanni contract.
This contract before you is something mentioned to the board previously about trainings that we had held at Giovanni's that inadvertently had gone over a certain dollar amount. So we are requesting the board and presenting those trainings to be paid. Part of the contract also has permission to have expenditures up to $24,900. We typically hold our retirement dinner at Giovanni's at the end of the year, and so we're asking the board's authority if we're able to have an open PO for the remaining dollars within that contract to possibly utilize for events that may happen before the end of the fiscal year, June 30th.
Mrs. McCulloch?
So we had a conversation about this as well. Possibly a retirement dinner, but possibly more training, you said. It could be PD, it could be this, could be that. So again, a vague nature to leaving it open. You also told me that if the retirement dinner was there, you'd have to come back to us anyways because of the amount. So if you're going to have to come back to us anyways, I guess I feel as a board member, I'd rather you come back with the whole amount, and therefore, I would like to propose an amendment that we pay Giovanni's, and we're not voting on it today. So I let board members think about this, but basically, we've already incurred $19,686 in food and beverage and rooms and projector and service fee and all those kinds of things. I'll be quite frank, I'm really not happy as a board member. As a professional, I attend continuing education for my profession. I pay for it on my pocket. I pay for my food. If it's at a location out of town, I pay for travel there, I pay to stay there. And nobody pays me my pay while I'm there, but, and I feel like we really do need to encourage and work with our teachers and our professional, our administrators and everybody and support them. We do pay them their salary during professional development or these items, this retreat and the like, so we're supporting them in that way. I also understand that if people stay on site, it's, you know, you get a better, paying for your, you know, your time because they're not leaving and coming back. But we have, how many buildings in this district? One of these was, I think you said, 210 people, and then three of the other days were between 50 and 70 people. We have capacity. I mean, we have locations to do that. Yes, it's nice if you're doing a brainstorming retreat sort of thing, and, I mean, I can understand if you want to go offsite and you're just going to have this, we have to remove ourselves. But when we're training people on educational pieces, why can't we do it in educational buildings? And so before, I personally would want to authorize any additional money, I'm asking administration, otherwise I can make the amendment when we vote on it next week, that they make it so that we pay the contract, we owe Giovanni's this money, and then if you want to go offsite for more events, bring it to us. Let us see, let's see how the money's, and you know, I know we're a $400 million organization, and you know, $20,000 isn't that much money, and we're only talking about five-year, but it adds up, and it's the taxpayers' money. It's my money, I'm a taxpayer as well as anyone else, and so I think it starts small in that, and so from a governance perspective, I know you're going to have a conversation about how you want to proceed in the future, and, you know, when you have that, and you can have a conversation with the board, but in the meantime, instead of being vague and saying, well, we just want an extra $5,000, we think we're going to use it for the retirement dinner, but we may not. I'd like for you just to be able to bring that. So other board members, if you would like to weigh in, fine. If not, that's the conversation Mr. Zetiker and I had today.
Mr. Escobedo?
I guess I'd just say yes to everything Jude said. I mean, it seems like a drop in the bucket, but at the end of the day, you know, there's a lot of things we could do, be doing, supporting our teachers, and if we can spend this money elsewhere. Yeah, it's seeing some, I guess, I hate to be picky, but even seeing some of the costs there and just thinking we're paying for projector, for a microphone. I understand, again, I understand it's nothing but a drop in the bucket, but at the end of the day, it's money that could potentially be used somewhere else for a better use. So I don't know how it could, I'm actually, it's just a principle point here, I'm not sure how I can support this.
Any other comments? Mr. Rollins?
I guess my only additional comment is that when we moved into this building, we built out this boardroom, and I think we had a specific discussion about the fact that it could be used for professional development. The alternative boardroom, which probably nobody else remembers other than me and Mr. Schmidt, was going to be in the basement, we decided here instead, and the basement was going to be for professional development. And so I guess I'm just, I would just ask the question, you know, why we can't be doing this here in this room or, you know, down in the basement or some other space in this administration building. It's a nice building, especially this room, better than the basement, but for those numbers, the numbers that Mrs. McCulloch was talking about, it seems like we could be doing that here and not having to rent Giovanni's.
All right. Any other comments? This will come up for a vote on the 26th as well. Mrs. Holdley, you're up next with the revision for the Student Fundraising Activity Board Policy.
This is a revision that was suggested by the schools team. The current exhibit that's attached to the board policy really deals with the reasons why the fundraising activity is going to occur, and so this gets down to the nuts and bolts, the real information that we need. When are you going to start the fundraising? What is, what is the activity? Who is going to be collecting it? And it also makes sure that proper business techniques are being used, so it's deposited[1748.66] So it's deposited with the finance tech at the schools and so on. So it's much more expansive and so that's the reason for the change.
Mr. Connor.
A couple of things. So the exhibit, the 2.325E1, that's the proposed. You said that's existing? You meant this is proposed, right?
The change.
Right. So we have an exhibit.
We have a current one and we're seeking to replace it in its entirety.
Right. So I'm just.
This is the revised.
This is the revised version because you were saying, okay. So the question I've got is, because this is procedural as well, obviously in most policies, you know, so the policy itself, is that actually changing or just this exhibit?
The exhibit to the policy is what's being changed.
Right. So the actual policy, so we're in a sense adding the procedural part to it through this exhibit to say, this is how we expect it to be run. And would I assume that, and maybe I missed it because you did say about the standard procedures, I mean, is this auditable? Like, I don't know if there's any explanation on some of the mechanics of it. So do we expect this to be audited?
Yes.
Okay. That's, all right. So that's part of the process. Okay. That's, that's it.
My question for administration would be is, how will this be rolled out to those people that run student fundraising activities like principals and coaches and whatever, whoever else does it?
So this will replace the form they currently use as soon as it's approved by the board. The biggest change is the handling of money and the deposits directly to the financial technicians. They've received training on that at the admin retreat. So this form is consistent with the training they already received. And then there'll be follow-up, if they want to have follow-up questions, they can talk to their supervisors about it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. This will come up for our vote on September 26th. Mr. Baling, you are up next with the ComEd agreement and a bunch of architect agreements.
Okay.
It's a highly technical term, a bunch.
Two of each, just a pair. This is three, so it's a bunch, yes. First item is Commonwealth Edison. We need them to remove and relocate some of their distribution network in the vicinity of the new school over at Kishawaki and Caitlin Streets. And that's an amount of $36,830.55. I guess this is one of those things, not unlike when you're buying a house from someone where you're going to build the new school. It's, you have to negotiate with that person and only that person. And this is the same case we have with the utility. It's their line, we have to pay them to move it.
Whatever they tell us, we have to pay them, right? Okay. Mr. Rollins, he has a question, I guess.
Yeah, the only, the only connection between my question and the agenda item is the word ComEd. So we've been having some power outages at schools. The most recent was last Thursday at Marshall Middle, which was not a storm day. And I understand, and if I remember correctly, we've been having them now on a fairly regular basis. So where are we at with discussions with ComEd about whatever is going on with their distribution set, system out there?
Bet Mr. Schmidt's going to answer that.
Yes, I will defer to Mr. Schmidt on this one.
Yes, actually, I talked to Whitney, our rep for ComEd today. We're going to meet with their reliability department Friday out there. What she tells me is they kind of look at it, how many outages you have over a certain timeline or a time period to see if that service gets kicked up to the next level to get replaced. We've had since 2014, three service outages out there at Marshall. So she's going to work with the reliability department and we're going to meet out there on Friday to discuss what's the next steps.
All right. I mean, just for those of you on the board who didn't know it, they were scheduled to do their map testing that day and they lost power.
We did not know that. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Connor.
Yeah, I was just going to say that this and the next three items were the items I referred to that were brought to the committee. We did talk a little bit about on the next items, in particular, not so much this one, about the background and keeping the contracts local. So that was brought up. And again, we're happy to say that we're really supporting the local community, the business community on this. So we would encourage that and that got good feedback from the Ops Committee.
So if I could preface the next three items with the same general statement in that all three of these contracts are under the Professional Services Selection Act. So in all three cases, we have what we consider a satisfactory existing relationship with these design firms. So we've tried to, as always, assign projects to the firm that we think has the best ability to execute them successfully. Not that they all couldn't, but we also like to have a lot of firms involved and also be able to do things in parallel that one firm may not be able to do with staff limitations. So the first one is Bradley &amp; Bradley Architects. There's a lump sum proposal for $67,582 to perform design services to put a new roof on this building as well as the operations support center building. Depending upon where the cost come out with our estimates, it could be anywhere from a 5.4% to 6.15% contract. I should also note that for Bradley &amp; Bradley, we have a couple of options in their contract, one of which I believe is another $18,000 to do the design work to replace our atrium on this building. Not so obvious at night, but if during the day, if you looked up, a lot of the glass units of, the thermal seals have failed and there's a lot of discoloration, a lot of fogging, that type of thing. I believe that dates from the original construction of this building in the early 1980s. Any questions on this one?
That's part of the scheduled deferred maintenance plan, right?
Actually, yes. I'm glad you brought that up. Neither one of these is on our deferred maintenance schedule. The operations support building is one that's been, had quite a bit of leaking there since I started working here. It's an unusual old industrial sawtooth style roof where they had the clear story windows before they had good electrical. So the roof in profile is like this. So you have an internal gutter every 25 feet. And we've got to take a look at either doing it with a better flashing system or perhaps maybe even changing the structure by adding some more cords to the trusses to make it more of a traditional flat roof if the engineering will prove out on that. And then this building would come out of Fund 24, which is primarily, I understand, funded by the lease that we have in this building.
Ms. McCullough.
Well, that was one of my questions. Was it coming out of the lease money? And my second question is, you said it's an alternate. I mean, are you going to do it or are you not going to do it? We're voting to do it next week if.
As far as the atrium goes, I assume that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes. Once we get the architect on board, that's something we're going to take a look at just on a very preliminary basis and try to come up with some design solutions and put a dollar figure to it to see if it's something we can afford.
So this will include that, their time to do?
If we do the full-blown design forbidding of the atrium work in addition to the roof, it'd be another $18,000, I believe, is what the contract stipulates.
Well, I just want to know what I'm voting on next week.
I'm sorry?
Are we voting on the alternates or not next week? So, or two weeks? So somebody, and the same with the Ops Building is.
Basically, we don't know if we have enough money available to do the atrium at this time. So we're not committing ourselves to that $18,000 at this point, but we'd like to have the option to do that if we have.
No, I get that, but why even have the conversation if you don't have the money to make the fix? But you're saying you don't know what the fix is, so.
Right. So we want to design it and at least do the preliminary design so we can get an idea as to what it would cost.
Okay.
The next one is Hagerty Architects who did the addition at Macintosh several years ago. And this is to wrap up the deferred maintenance on that building, other than the masonry tuck plane, which we've already done a contract for that. And that'd be the roof and the boilers and then the ventilation for the pods as part of actually the facility's master plan. Their proposed fee is six and a half percent and it's about $825,000 for work, which translates to a fee of $53,592. Any questions on that one?
And this wasn't done earlier as part of their, the work at Macintosh?
Their work was primarily just the addition that we did four years ago. And now this is to go back and do the deferred maintenance portions and the roof on the existing.
So it won't come out of the facilities?
The ventilation, for the ventilation for the pods is out of the facility's master plan. We have a line item in future projects. If you may recall, when we did the facilities plan oversight committee report, we had two appendices in D. One was projects in design but not bid out yet. And another one that was projects not even started with design yet. So this was a project that was on that list.
So only ventilation for the pods?
Correct.
And then the rest will come out of where?
The rest was in the deferred maintenance plan, the roughly $16 million that we had for deferred maintenance. All three of these projects were covered within the 279, 279 million that is. The third one is Richard L. Johnson. This is the Marshall Elementary roof, which is about $400,000 for work. That is on the deferred maintenance list. The Roosevelt roof is not. That's one that we're going to have to do some reordering. When we did the tuck plane job there a year ago, we recognized that the roof membrane had started to shrink and it was pulling away from the parapets on the exterior of the, exterior of the building. One of the things we will explore is whether or not we could perhaps cut the membrane in a certain distance from the parapets and just flash that in. I think, Todd, I think this one, we were expecting to get about another six, seven years out of that.
2024.
2024, yes. So if we can get away with a patch, that's certainly what we'll certainly explore initially. Otherwise, it would be about an $800,000 project, we anticipate. And of course, we'd have to reorder some priorities within our deferred maintenance to make that happen. And there's no questions on that one. I would like to add that we only have about two, maybe three contracts left to do for design services and we will have the entire $16 million of deferred maintenance covered. So we're starting to make progress on those now, too.
Roof repair or replacements are done in the summer or can?
We can do it basically whenever it's not snowing heavily. If you have, if you get snow or ice, that's problematic. Otherwise, we can run those probably, I'd just say, nine months of the year, maybe eight months of the year.
Any other questions or comments? These will all come up for our vote on the 26th.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So, and maybe this is Mr. Connor, but, but you're here as well because you had been giving updates on those maintenance project on the, you know, when you did the roofs, the HVAC. And I didn't hear one in this month's report for Ops Committee. So are we scheduled to get more of those? I mean, because I know you need to start looking at the money, especially as you start talking about the roof situation. So what's the next one, please?
There'll be scope-specific updates starting in October, Todd is saying. So like where we were doing one for roofs, one for boilers, one for windows.
Right. What's the next one? What is it?
You'll have to get back to her on that.
I know my staff is working on it though because I did.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Mr. Schmidt, you're up next with a couple of purchases and the IGA with the Park District.
Yes, the IGA that we have tonight is an IGA with the Rockford Park District for Walker Elementary School. Part of this process, when we looked at it for a school consolidation and we were looking at closing some of our buildings, the Park District reached out to us and stated that they want some of our buildings, White Swan, Thompson, New Milford, Walker. Part of this process, we've already have IGAs with them for New Milford, Thompson and White Swan. With this building, we went through the process with looking at an RFP out there with the city of Rockford to see if anybody would want to redevelop this property and partner with the city. The RFP was out there. Nobody bid on that RFP or submitted a proposal for that RFP. We reached out to the Park District. The Park District was still interested in this property. If you recall, when we did community meetings out there, over 70% of the individuals that came to the community meetings at Walker would like that turned into a park. So the Park District with this IGA, it's very similar to the other ones that we have. That this district would demo, demolish the building, leave the playground and then turn the property over to the Park District with one year after we approve this agreement.
I just want to make a comment. I think I've already talked to you about this. I do get concerns from the community about criminal activity at the Walker School building. There's been one or two incidences and we are still responsible for that building.
Correct.
Until we tear it down and give that property to the Park District. So what, what's our security for that building until we turn it over?
Well, right now, we got a lot of boarded up windows because we've had a lot of vandalism out there. We still have our alarm in place and intact. If somebody gets inside of the building, then our alarms would trigger and then we would send it either the permarch guard or the police department out there. We still have the perimeters with the lights on. It's the best we can do right now. We don't have any exterior cameras out there or anything like that.
Right. Okay. Mr. Rollins.
I didn't really have a question about the intergovernmental agreement, but I just had sort of a global question, which I had asked the superintendent before and I think he's answered it, but I just want to talk about it publicly. So we occasionally do have chats about whether we want to do a different magnet program, whether we want to do another special program here in the district. We've had some fairly, some good news on enrollment, good news other than the standpoint of some of our buildings are suffering from a little bit of overcrowding. So we have these buildings that we closed as part of the facilities plan. I just want to make sure, as I, as I put it to the superintendent, that we, we're not sitting here, or somebody's not sitting here five years from now, wishing that we hadn't torn down all these buildings. So is it still our plan to tear down all the buildings that we closed? Is it, would it make sense to mothball one or two of them? And so could somebody speak to that?
Well, right now, we're looking at keeping a couple of the buildings potentially right now based on some of the enrollment changes that we do have out there. We do have the intergovernmental agreements with the New Milford, the Thompson, the Cherry Valley, the White Swan, and now potentially this with Walker. We still have a couple more buildings, obviously Kishawaki needs to be demolished for the new school. We will have Nelson, we have Dennis and we have King right now. If you look at it, that's enough inventory right now as we stand right now that we'll evaluate that when we start getting up there for the time for Nelson building. But right now, we have Walker and King that are sitting there empty right now and New Milford. We don't need that capacity. It's storage space right now. It's vandalism. If we sit there and we keep King open, which is a little bit more centrally located, that's a building that would be a relief valve for us if we need to sit there and we have a boost in enrollment in the district. And then once we sit there and transition with the new school and convert that over, then we still have Dennis over there, too, which is another school, which was an elementary school. We converted it into an early childhood center. And that would give us capacity as we stand right now. We'll have to see where we're at with enrollment another year, two years from now, when it comes time for us to start looking at demolishing Nelson.
Okay. I wouldn't think you'd seriously consider keeping Nelson.
No, I. It's a part of the building. That's where as if we look at it. Also, we start busting out the same.
I think the two buildings, Mr. Rollins, to be more direct, I think the two buildings that I think we are going to, we are certainly going to honor our commitment to demolish buildings that are not going to be used as part of our facilities plan. We made a very public commitment there. We are seeing some enrollment changes in the last few years. And so I think the two buildings that we would most likely keep our options open on because we naturally have a little bit of time would be King and also some, some consideration would be given to Dennis as an early childhood center, which would then potentially allow us to look at buyer and/or Dennis. This is very speculative at this point. At this point, we have no need for those buildings, but I do think taking a little extra time on demolition is something we should consider.
And also, we have other inventory right now with Stiles and Page Park, which we're renting out or leasing out to other entities right now, too. So those are still technically our buildings, too.
Mr. Connor.
Yeah, just, this wasn't what I intended to talk about, but Mr. Rollins brings up a good point. The one thing I'll say is, back to what Mr. Scravano said, is you do have to balance leaving the buildings there with the activities. And I can tell you that I did get some neighborhood feedback for Nelson, that there have been some incidents around there and that the neighbors were concerned about activity. So I think it's a, it's a good, fair point, but we always want to make sure that, that we balance what's going on in the neighborhood. So, I mean, I'll just say, I, if we knew we had a purpose for a building, that we had the extra, I don't, I think personally speaking, just for me, I think it makes sense for us to always make sure we have our options open, especially since once you demolish, you can't go back. However, however, I think, you know, to keep really our commitment to the neighborhood, I would hesitate in this case only because we did commit to it. Park District wants it. The neighbors really do want, I think that park, that was clearly their. do want, I think that park, that was clearly their, um, their sentiment. So, um, it, it is a good point, but I think the one thing we talked about right at the beginning of this process is we want to make sure that we, if you will, do no harm to the neighborhoods and the valuation and, uh, really the commitment to the neighborhood. So, that would be the offset that we'd have to consider.
Ms. McCullough.
Uh, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were doing-
That's right. No, I, I actually, uh, the, the original point, uh, poor Mr. Schmidt's heard this 10 times, but I do want to make sure that assuming this does go forward on Walker, I want to send the notes to the neighborhood associations with the details so that they know what our plans are, um, so that, um, there's no sentiment that things are going along and we're not communicating with the public. So, please put that as follow-up items, that this IGA is going forward, here's our plans right now, so that they get feedback from the meetings we had a year ago.
Yep.
And the communication, communication department has already started working on that. They've done a great job for us.
Totally understand. I just, I want to make sure that publicly, everybody knows we're committed to that and our commitment to the process that we started.
Ms. McCullough.
Well, I put my mind on before you said the word Styles, but we do have, we are landlords, which is not what we're in the business to be. Um, I know our charter schools are, have bought the buildings, right?
Uh, they bought Skyview and Jackson.
Jackson. Um, does, who else does not have, who hasn't bought their's legacy?
Galapagos has the old church, or not, old church.
Yeah, but we're, we're not renting to them, I guess, is my point.
No, correct.
Um, so Page Park, we have Regional?
Yes.
At Page Park, but still our building upkeep, we're looking at, as you're looking at these cycles, life cycles on roofs and all those pieces. Um, and then at Styles, we have, um, is it, uh, it's, uh, the alternative program, right?
Ombudsman.
Ombudsman, I couldn't think of their, their word. And is it just our students or is it from the whole area? But, and they're still just using half the building?
Uh, yeah, pretty much half the building, yes. They're making a request, they would like to use one extra room that we're looking at, too.
So, and ILC is pretty much the same, right? They're using our building and?
They're over there at Kishawaki Street.
Right. So, is it a different arrangement between Styles and, um, Kishawaki? And how does, how is it different, the two places? Because they're both ombudsmen.
I, I don't, I don't remember the contract exactly.
Okay. Point being, I'd, I'd really, as a, as a board member, thinking about taking care of buildings, it, not just the ones that, but the ones that we own, that's not what we're, our business. Our business is education, teach students, you know, move achievement. And so, if there's a way that we can get out from under that, is anybody having those conversations? So?
Thanks. Okay, go ahead with the purchases then.
Yes, the next two items are 514 Caitlin and 721 Kishawaki Street. These are a couple of the last few pieces of the puzzle that we're looking for land acquisition out at Kishawaki School, um, for the new school for Kishawaki and Nelson. With, after these two pieces of property, um, there is three more, um, individual houses that we still need to negotiate and one business for our full land acquisition of 50 some odd properties out there for the new school. We're just about done.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. These will come for us to vote on September 26th. Um, is there any other business for tonight? And I just remind you that we have a Strategic Planning Saturday Board Retreat on September 23rd, starting at 7:30 in the morning, uh, for the board members. And, uh, then our next board meeting is the 26th. So, um, if there's no further business, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. We are adjourned at 8:31.